Good evening and welcome to the St. Helena Planning Commission meeting for May 17th, 2016. I'd like to ask our, I don't really know what to call you Victor, our consultant to listen to Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Cobersin?
Present.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Vice Chair Kistner?
Vice Chair Kistner is absent due to an injury.
Chairperson Parker?
Present.
Moving on to our public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak at public forum?
Good evening and hello, Planning Director and Commissioners. My husband and I, and my name is Elizabeth Gels. My husband Glenn and I live at 645 McCorkle Avenue, and I'm here to discuss the high-density zoning on the north side of McCorkle Avenue. This zoning was haphazardly slapped on this street in 1993 without input from any of the current residents. Directly across the street are high-end, single-family residences on large lots. This is not good city planning. There is a 10-unit apartment complex at 664 McCorkle Avenue that already approved, that has approved our town, and the eight-unit sweat equity project at 684 McCorkle, and the developer who is in the process of getting approval for eight to 10, two-to-three-bedroom apartments at 632 McCorkle. These proposals alone will potentially add 130-plus more people and up to 50-plus more cars, vehicles, within a few hundred feet of each other on a street that has not had the necessary improvements to support that kind of density. We think that the city should reduce the zoning on north side of McCorkle Avenue because it is poor planning and because the city has put the public at peril by neglecting to complete the required upgrades necessary on this street to support the consequences of this erroneous high-density zoning. The hammerhead turnaround at the end of this dead-end street required by the city ordinance is only one of the improvements that would need to be made to support the designation of high-density on the street. Please note St. Helena Municipal Code Section 1536020, California Fire Code Title 24, Section 9, Chapter 5, Sections 503, 24, and 503, 25. To summarize, we believe that both sides of McCorkle Avenue should be rezoned to low, medium density. Thanks very much for listening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum? Oh, I see that staff has a comment.
And just to clarify, neither of the projects have actually been approved on McCorkle.
My name is Libby Schaefer. I live at 653 McCorkle, and I implore you not to approve any further building projects, especially this new proposed development of 10 rental units at 632 McCorkle after June 9th until the city design standards are in place as described in H-E-1 dot E. As Elizabeth mentioned, we have our town, which actually all the neighbors are in favor of, the eight-unit sweat equity proposal, but this new proposal at 632 McCorkle will add another 10 units. Elizabeth has mentioned the density. Imagine 54 more garbage cans within a block and a half of each other, and because people store stuff in their garages, there's a good chance that cars will be parked on both sides of that street. So imagine what Tuesday morning's going to look like. It's going to be nuts. So, there's a visual for you. The hammerhead turnaround is not up to code for emergency vehicles or fire trucks. So that would have to be, you know, addressed. So we basically feel that it is, or I feel, it is completely cattywampus, my word for the day, to have single-family homes on the south side of the street and high-density, 28 units per acre on the north side. I thought the goal of St. Helena city planning and growth was ahead in the direction of allowing small developments of seven to 10 units evenly distributed throughout the city and not just on the east side of town. Because increasing the density on the north side is completely counter to this goal. So I strongly feel that both sides of McCorkle should be rezoned to low, medium density. And again, I urge you not to approve any more building projects until this city design standards is in place. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I'm going to move on. We're putting in a brief item. Commissioner Monet has been having some email troubles, and she has a brief announcement regarding that.
Yes, I, my computer kind of froze, and I took it in and ordered a new one and took, they fixed it enough that I could use it, but I have not been able to access my planning commi, my email for the planning commission. So my apologies to anyone who has written, and I have not been able to get back to you in, I think, for the last four days. So I should have everything fixed by Friday, I'm hoping. So I just want to apologize to people here, people who might be watching, and especially to people who aren't hearing this in any way, because they won't know. I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent items, we have the approval of the minutes from our May 3rd, 2016 meeting. Do we have any additions, revisions?
Yeah, Victoria Brajha's name was not spelled correctly. It was, I mean, I can see it was phonetically spelled. Vicky Brajha. Vicky B-R-A-J-A. So I just wanted to correct it to the, to the, to the correct spelling and the correct name.
Noted.
Okay.
Any others? If we could have a motion to approve the consent items of the, with the minutes, with the revisions.
So moved.
I'll second.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Cobersin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to our main item of the evening, the study session to continue discussion of the April 2016 draft general plan. May we have a brief staff report from Mr. Cornelius?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Let me just kind of summarize kind of where we are with the general plan. As Commissioners will recall, back on April 19th, the commission held its kind of first formal study session in reviewing the general plan. Commission covered Chapters 1 through Chapter 3. There was a letter submitted from Citizens Voice, and there was a pretty good-spirited discussion of the issue of the low-medium density. So those essentially the main things that transpired back at the previous study session. So now we're, here we are, fast forward. This is the second study session on the general plan. Will be in study session format until the EIR is released, and that's coming up, and Noah and I'll be discussing that in a minute. So in the, in the May 17th, in the staff report for this study session, there's some new material. Essentially, most of what's in there really is a cut and paste from the previous staff report, where I simply brought forward the information on the chapters for through the balance of the general plan that the commission hadn't got to at the last study session. The main new information relates to this question of the new residential land use designation being proposed for the city. And at the, at the previous study session, both commission and staff noted that there really was not much in the way of data in that staff report on, on the issue. So in the interim, staff did some research, and essentially, the question is, is this new lower-density designation, as it would apply to the balance of the area in the city that's designated medium-density residential, which allows a density of up to 16 units an acre. The new designation of the low-medium would allow a density of four to seven units an acre. So what staff did was look at five typical blocks, both on the east and the west side of the city, and using the county GIS system, staff calculated lot sizes, average lot sizes, densities, and then did a calculation of the number of units that could be added under the current medium-density designation and the proposed low-medium-density designation. I think what this analysis showed, from a staff standpoint, I think pretty conclusively is that the, the new designation that's being proposed, the new low-medium designation, is really a pretty exact fit for the existing neighborhoods in that area. In these five essentially random blocks that, the representative blocks that were chosen, the average density of those blocks comes out to about 5.2 units an acre, and the, kind of the midpoint of the density of the new land use designation being considered is 5.5 units an acre. So it's clearly a much better fit than the, than the current medium-density designation, which allows a density essentially roughly triple what the current density is out there. So staff, we thought that was important information to bring to the commission, just to provide a bit of, kind of data to back up the rationale for the, for the proposal. And as commission's aware, there are a whole number of policies in the plan that speak to neighborhood preservation, and clearly this question of density is very central to that. So that really covers, summarizes what's in the staff report. It's really up to the commission how they'd like to, commission would like to move forward tonight. Really kind of three options, I guess. One is simply the commission could start out where the commission left off after the April 19th meeting, essentially starting with Chapter 4 on public facilities. Or if the commission likes, the commission could revisit or have additional discussion on this question of the low-medium-density designation, given the additional information presented by staff. And I guess the other item, if the commission wanted or felt appropriate, commission could also revisit the Citizen Voice letter. So it's really, staff's flexible, it really is up to the commission in terms of the, how the commission would like to proceed. Noah, would you like to talk about schedule then in terms of next steps?
So, thank you Victor. So just wanted to talk about kind of what's going to be coming in the future, both for the public as well as for the commission. So as Victor mentioned, we are working on finalizing the general plan, EIR, that is anticipated to be ready for public review and comment on Monday, May 23rd, so less than a week away. We are anticipating that will be the initial day for, or essentially the first day of the 45-day public review and comment period. So CEQA requires a 45-day public review and comment period for EIRs. So that will be on the street essentially for the city, citizens to review. We will also have it available for the Commissioners to start reviewing. If that date is the 21st, then essentially that comment period would end on July 7th. So that's an important date for folks in the public to think about when providing comments to staff on that document. And then based on that, we would spend some time responding to comments. So essentially, you have a draft document published, comments come in from the public, comment period closes, staff then compiles those comments and then provides responses to them to essentially provide the public with additional information that was necessary based on their comments or additional analysis, if that's what comes out of it. And then we anticipate coming back to the commission on August 2nd or August 16th for action on the general plan itself, as well as the general plan, EIR. And that action, as a reminder, both to the commission and the public, is a recommendation for adoption to the city council. So that's the tentative schedule as we currently are identifying it. I'm pretty confident in the May 23rd date. Obviously, the August 2nd or 16th dates are somewhat flexible, given we don't know the breadth of comments we're going to receive or the amount of time that's necessary to formulate our responses.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
I just, I wanted to clarify, I think it was just a slip of your time, but I wanted to clarify whether or not the, the blocks were chosen randomly or chosen as a representative block.
Thanks for asking. It really wa, I tried to choose what I felt were representative blocks. I didn't kind of close my eyes and point at the map and do it that way. So I tried to pick what I felt were representative.
Okay, thank you. And then to my fellow Commissioners, would we like to review the land use and the economic sustainability? And I do see that there's people in the audience that probably want to speak on those items. Kind of keep the comments light and delve in where needed, and then keep moving on with Chapter 4, Public Facilities and Services. How does everyone feel about that?
I think we should review them.
Certainly the meeting, the low-density. So when you're asking about the economic sustainability, go back through the whole, no, sorry. So are you, so I- Just the letter from the- Right, so just specifically this, not looking at the- Not the entire thing, just the letter itself, now that we've had more time to marinate with it. Excuse me?
What letter?
The letter we received at our last meeting?
Oh, yes.
From Citizens Voice?
Um, yes, I'm totally, I think we definitely should.
Okay, perfect, all right. So with that, let's go to Chapter 2, and I will open up the public hearing. I'm going to have the public comment, and then we can have discussions if everyone's okay with that. Yep, all right. I'm going to open up the public hearing and invite any kind of comments on Chapter 2, that's the land use, chapter. And also, if you could state your name, you don't, you're not required to, but if you don't mind stating your name, that would be appreciated.
I have no problem. Good evening, my name is Vicky Brajha, and I live at 708 Hunt Avenue. My husband David and I have 10 pages of written comments and legal analysis focused on the general plan element dealing with land use as it relates to the Hunter subdivision project. I'm going to summarize in public comment only a very small amount of those comments. The real economic risk here is not the threat of a lawsuit from the developer, but the much larger threat of a lawsuit from citizens of St. Helena or taxpayers who object to the misuse of public funds. So we are all clear on what is at stake here. There is the real possibility of having to repay all or part of $37 million that have been expended on the flood control project. Public funds come with obligations and responsibilities, and we don't have the luxury of ignoring them without some significant peril. I know there are people who say that the no-growth or development require, requirement is only found in the findings section of Measure A, and that for some reason that doesn't matter. If you've heard that too, then you need to tell those people to reread the entire measure. Our flood control projects specifically say they can't be designed for growth or development, and we have certified to just that when we asked for drawdowns of Measure A funds. It will be, it will be, design of the levees were intended to allow for growth or development is in contravention of almost all of the funding, public funding sources used to build the flood control project. But let me give you just one example, and I stress, this is just one example. The city council paid the developer $325,000 to settle a lawsuit alleging that the city had failed to use the dirt excavated from the flood control project to construct a building pad on the developer's property. It was part of the land deal negotiated and signed by the city. Of course, a building pad would not be needed unless there was the intention to build a new housing development behind the levee. And this settlement was paid out of Measure A funds and was approved in closed-door session by the city council on December 19th, 2012. To be honest, this one alone looks pretty convincing of not only the intent, but also the misuse of funds. The only way this problem is resolved successfully for the city is to re-designate Hunter, the Hunter parcel as agriculture to clearly demonstrate the city has no intention of violating any of the obligations we assumed when taking local, state, and federal monies. As to what the potential legal claims the developer may assert resulting from this re-designation, let's look at each of one, each one of these separately. The attorney hired by the city council to advise them on the developers' rights under the Housing Accountability Act came to the conclusion, that is, at the date the planning department staff deemed the developers' tentative map application as complete, which was March 28th, 2011, the city had to continue to process the application under the laws in effect of that date. Some people believe that would be the end of the re-designation or rezoning issue. But on further review, one only has to look at that date. The tentative map application was deemed complete two months before the completion of the flood control project and 15 months before FEMA updated the 100-year floodplain map. This means the Hunter parcel was still sitting in the middle of a floodplain at the time the map was deemed complete and likely still subject to all the restrictions on new construction on a floodplain. The Housing Accountability Act also allows for denial of applications if certain findings are made by the city, and the city certainly has the ability to make those findings because the facts support it. For example, the health and safety of all residents would be severely jeopardized if the city was forced to repay any or all of the public monies. Severe cuts to police and fire services would create significant health and safety issues, and the problems definitely couldn't be mitigated. Moving beyond the Housing Accountability Act, let's look at some of the legal threats made by the attorney for the developer as to potential causes of action against the city. First, the developer says he had a deal. In Trancas Property Owners versus the City of Malibu, a 2006 appellate court decision, the court basically held that because the deal was made between Trancas and the City of Malibu and was approved by the city in closed session, the deal was invalid and that the closed-door session violated the Brown Act, even though the agreement involves settlement of litigation. The Brown Act's implied exception for adoption of litigation settlements in closed-door sessions does not embrace such agreements for adoption as provided for governmental decisions without legally required public hearings. This means that any deals allegedly made by the developer in the city behind closed doors as part of the land swap deal are likely unenforceable. Second, the developer says he has a vested right. Outside of any rights under the Housing Accountability Act, California law has been clear since 1976, when the California Supreme Court decided AVCO Community Developers, Inc. versus South Coast Regional Commission, which basically says, "A developer has no vested interest in zoning a property until a building permit is issued." And the developer here has no building permit or functional equivalent. Third, the developer says he would consider any denial, downzoning, or anything short of full acceptance as a regulatory taking. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal and Lakeview Development Corporation versus the City of South Lake Tahoe makes clear that any restrictions on development do not constitute a taking or deprive a developer of his property without due process. Lastly, his assertions of promissory estoppel claims. Particularly instructive in this is the First District Court of Appeal decision in Tiago versus the Town of Ross. The First District, the First DCA, by the way, is the appellate court that hears appeals from Napa County. The developer here made assertions of estoppel and regulatory taking claims when the Town of Ross refused to grant an application to build residence on the developer's hillside property. The court said, quote, "Courts have yet to extend the vested rights or estoppel theory to instances where a developer lacks a building permit or functional equivalent, regardless of the property owner's detrimental reliance on local government actions, regardless of how many other land use and other preliminary approvals have been granted. In conclusion, the planning commission or the planning director should direct the planning staff to take no further action that would imply any vesting on the Hunter application until these important policy, financial, and legal issues are resolved by the planning commission and the city council." I raise this issue because in 2011, the attorneys for the developers sent a letter implying threats of legal action, and three days later, the planning staff deemed the application complete. The general plan needs to re-designate the Hunter parcel as agriculture, and it needs to be done with this general plan and now. We should all be a lot less concerned about the economic implications of a lawsuit from the developer and be a lot more concerned about a lawsuit by taxpayers or our own residents for misuse of funds. Thank you for your patience, by the way.
Thank you. I think I'm ready for the bar exam.
I have, here they are. The original is for you since it was a present, and then there's copy for anybody else in there. We have people that aren't here, so if we could have that dropped off again, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on the land use chapter?
First, I wanted to thank the planning commission for the opportunity to speak about the general plan. I'm, of course, going to speak about the language, the winery language that's in the land used. It's LU5 dot 6. As you can, you might remember, back in September, Citizens Voice submitted new language for the general plan concerning wineries in the city limits. I think a lot of you don't have these. Do you, you want more copies of this? Okay. A few more, sorry about that. You have not heard from us, again, concerning this language until now, because we could not in good faith ask the citizens to comment on this until the proposed general plan was released a few weeks ago. I just, I have here to hand in tonight over 100 names, and will continue to hand in names every two weeks as received in batches of 100 or more concerning this petition that we have put forth. So to quote Alan Greenspan, "I know you think you understood what you thought I said, but I'm not sure you realize that what you heard is not what I meant." So I'm going to start all over again. Okay. That's my favorite line. So what in fact are we asking for? We're asking for greater clarity of vision, a consistent understanding of winery, and a consistent approach to the regulation of wineries within the city limits. We propose just modifying the LU5 point 6. It will better guide winery-related development in every district in the city and help guarantee adequate protection for the residential neighborhoods and the small-town character of the city. So what does it currently say, or what's in the general plan that's being proposed? Permit wineries and other agricultural-related industries to locate in the city if their location does not adversely impact surrounding uses or city services, water, traffic, et cetera, or the quality and character of the community. Okay? A bit vague, a bit ambiguous, exactly about what it means. So what I'm, what we're trying to do is that, that's the current language. What we're in fact only asking is that the two definitions of wineries found in the current municipal code be put, added to the general plan to better guide winery-related development and consistent understanding of wineries in St. Helena. The current language, so I read you the current language. It's ambiguous, it's not guaranteed protection. So the history of this language, it is actually the same language as in 1993. But up until last year, what would happen is someone moved to town or whatever, look at the general plan, yes, you can have a winery within the city limits. So you go to the municipal code, you go to zoning, there's winery section, a small winery, which is, a small winery is defined as a winery in a parcel of five acres or greater in size, where the winery is an accessory used to residential use. The residential use shall be the primary resident of the winery owner or winery operator. That's what's in the municipal code right now. So we just put that in, we just want that part put into the general plan. Because then you go to two other, three other sections of the municipal code, which is the 20-acre agricultural, the W District, and the Ag Preserve, all which say, permit wineries to locate in the city if they, wineries, if they meet the definition of a winery. A winery is defined as an agricultural processing facility used for the fermenting and processing of grape juice into wine and the re-fermenting of still wine into sparkling wine. A winery shall be sited on 20 acres or greater in size to ensure the protection of the quality and character of the community. That's what's in all, all of those, that's what it says. So all we're asking, because what happened with, I hate to bring this up, but what happened with the Davies Project is there is a huge loophole. What it says in service commercial is, outside of all the winery stuff, it says a winery is permissible. But what is a winery? There is no definition. Everybody used to go and look at the, what the winery sections were of the municipal code, and you went right down the line. You went to, oh, see all the wineries. Can I keep going? Okay, thank you. So, so that's the loophole we're trying to close. We're trying to keep the exact definition that people have used forever, except for- We're trying to keep the exact definition that people have used forever, except for, I have to admit, that Maryvale 100 years ago doesn't sit on either one of these. But besides that, service, if, if we allow this Davies-style wineries on one acre, no vineyard, no land to protect, to protect anybody surrounding it, grapes being hauled in, wastewater being hauled out, all the waste being hauled out, and then service commercial lines the entrance to St. Helena. Okay? So the whole entrance to St. Helena will without a doubt change on the city forever. By defining winery in the, in the general plan, using the current definition found in the municipal code, you would only be closing that loophole. Once this precedent has been set, which it has, it is almost impossible to go backwards unless we change this language without expensive legal issues, and we all know we don't want to do that. We ask you to recommend to the city council that the language from Citizens Voice proposal be added to the general plan. The language was, in fact, vetted by two lawyers, and the accessory uses, which are down at the bottom of this proposal, were, in fact, taken verbatim from the winery ordinance for the county, if you want to know where that language came from. We didn't just make it up. So please, I'm asking you, all of you, just don't pass it, just to pass it and fix it later. I can't imagine why this would make sense or be the most effective way to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So here, so what I have here is I have 125 names. Some of them are from our Citizens Voice website. We have a political website, up.org, and it allows you to do petitions online, and it dates the time that you signed it, and it tells you the date and the time, and it has, it has a code next to it so that if you think that we're fooling around and sending all these emails in, there's actually a way to prove that this came from who we say they came to, came from. So here's the first 125 names, and hopefully I'll be back in two weeks with 125 more.
This is the public language.
Yes, yeah. And what we did, just for when, when it's online, they can see what the language is, they can see what they're signing for right away. But when we went out and met with the community, in order that they could, in order that they could see what we were actually talking about, sorry about that, they could see what we're talking about, we wrote it out on every single one of the petitions so that we felt that it was, they actually had a chance to see what we were saying. So thank you again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeff Ellsworth, Sylvaner. I swallowed a bug today, so I'm having a little trouble talking. So what Susan said, it's just as simple as linking the general plan to the zoning of the winery definition zoning so that that loophole isn't there and, and people can't read it as being able to create whatever they want. The, the winery definitions and the zoning were, were put there for a reason, and the intent was that people wanting to build a winery in St. Helena would refer to the zoning, the winery definition there. So this would just link it to the general plan and make it consistent. Also, I think the EIR is foundational to this discussion, and the fact that the discussion started before the EIR came out, I think, I'm glad it's coming out, and, and the period that we have to look at it, I hope that it informs us to what the impacts are so that our decisions are based on that, so that it's not just something that's seen as an irritant, but it is actually, it is actually very pertinent to the decisions we make. So I'm just a little concerned that we started the discussion without seeing what the impacts The other thing is that there's been talk of a forensic accountant brought to town to, to look at what happened here over the last, I don't know however many years that we got into financial trouble. It seems to me that the idea of moving forward and making decisions to move forward when we don't know what happened in terms of process and oversight is, 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 is not, it's a bit rash, because I think we need to see where we went off course, even if it's just a little bit. Over time, we get separated from where we're trying to go. So I, I would say that that forensic accountant should be at least working concurrently with what we're doing now in terms of all our decisions, certainly not waiting to make these decisions and then say, we're going to look at what happened and where we went wrong. I think we need to know ahead of time what happened, make sure we have things in place so that doesn't happen again. If we do move forward with, with things, I do urge that you consider the language from the Citizens Voice, both the tourism and winery petitions, and also Mr. David. I read through his suggestions, and I thought they were all very valid, and I think that they should be considered as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Barr, 2480 Spring Mountain Road. I'm not going to revisit old ground, but I did want to thank everybody, which is everybody, who took the time to meet and talk about the, the tourism management section. It was above and beyond the call of duty. Most of you did it off-hours, and it was really terrific and much appreciated. I too have a petition, the same, online and not online, the hard copies, and I just wanted to turn these in. It's over 100 as well. There are 74 that are the online, I need to make copies of, bring them to the city hall tomorrow, but thank you all.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the land use chapter? Seeing none, I'm going to briefly close the public hearing and invite commissioner discussion on this chapter. Is there anything that we'd like to add to it with what we've heard tonight and as a continuation of our last meeting on this? Commissioner Koberstein.
Yeah, I have some comments. I've taken the unusual step of writing them out so that I can get through them and not repeat myself and offer them for your consideration. The consensus of the plan commission, when we discussed the downzoning issue, was to recommend to the council that the creation of this new zoning district be deleted from the April 2016 plan so that we don't derail adoption of the plan on its current schedule by inserting a new and potentially far-reaching issue that should but has not been thoroughly evaluated. The more I study this issue, the plan and the zoning ordinance, the more I'm convinced that much more review and evaluation of this proposed downzoning is required before it can become part of the plan. The result might be that we accept it, or some modification of it, or reject it, but I believe it requires more study. The medium-density district currently represents 70% of the total residential land in the city. This proposed change reduces the amount of land that can be developed within the medium-density range to nearly 40% of its former size, or current size, I should say. This is a 60% reduction in the medium-density district capacity that was reported in the housing element. The consequences may be significant. The structure of our zoning ordinance promotes density in order to yield efficient land use. The medium-density regulations, and I'm referring here to Section 17-40-060E2, include a provision that density in this district can be lowered by plan amendment, provided the plan commission and the city council shall make the findings in Section 17-12-110. That section directs us to take into consideration the consistency of the lower density with other goals and policies of the plan and to make findings related thereto. This action, which reduces density and merely gives it another district name, is a de facto reduction of density in this district, and we haven't even begun to do the required analysis. Just a cursory look at some of the goals and policies in the plan leads me to believe that there will be issues that require further consideration. On its face, this proposed downzoning seems inconsistent with goals and policies that promote workforce housing in medium and high-density districts. It shrinks the medium-density district considerably, inconsistent with plan provisions and existing use permit regulations in the medium district that promote transitioning a single-family home to duplex or triplex units. In the plan, we've challenged ourselves to identify target areas for conversion of single-family homes to multifamily dwellings and identify sites where conversion would be appropriate or desirable. This concept allows people to stay in their homes, and it has the positive effect of scattered affordable housing. We're reducing the available sites that can be considered. It's very doubtful that you could increase from one to three units density on a parcel in this newly-proposed district without exceeding the density limit of 7.1 per acre. We're called on to update the land use element in consideration of the established housing element, land use goals, and policies. The question is, is this new proposed district internally consistent with the housing element? Housing element policies 2.1 through 2.6 encourage higher-density development where appropriate, mixed-use development, second units, and a variety of housing type throughout the community. That's not my language. That's taken directly from the assessment. Looking at portions of the housing element, this proposed downzoning seems inconsistent with the goal of promoting a balance of housing types throughout the community. This proposed change seems, in my mind, to be shrinking and concentrating the areas where new housing opportunities can be created in the city. It seems to inhibit or perhaps preclude development of housing element program which encourages affordable housing in clusters of four to six units on infill parcels on the west side of town. It significantly reduces the area and opportunity where we can consider allowing higher-density housing in single-family neighborhoods, specifically in the medium and high-density districts, as long as the development character is maintained. Our goal is to study modifications to facilitate higher-density housing and to modify the zoning ordinance to encourage higher-density developments. We've done so with the recent zoning amendments. Now it seems we're going in the other direction. With respect to this particular downzoning, the housing element itself instructs that we are to evaluate redesignating and rezoning medium-density parcels other than the key opportunity parcels. I think we need to stop and perform the evaluation. We need to assess the ramifications of this downzoning and then move forward if we conclude that it's consistent with the goals and policies of our plan, or if not, to modify it or reject it. While I appreciate the staff's effort to provide information tonight for our review, the analysis essentially focuses solely and squarely on the maximum district allowable density alone, which is the 16 units per acre. That doesn't really get at the crux of the required analysis, which we are to do, which is to look at consistency with the plan. And I find personally some of the analysis unpersuasive. The downzoning is not needed now to prevent apartments over six units an acre from being built in the medium-density zone. First, there's the issue of use. The intent, stated intent of the medium family, excuse me, medium-density district is to develop single-family homes. Multiple housing is not a permitted use, not even by use permit. There's currently no entitlement to construct a 10-unit multifamily building in this district other than on the key opportunity sites that we recently identified. This analysis seems to disregard the other significant control over density, and I'm referring here to the minimum lot area of 7,000 square feet that is required for parcels for dwelling units, which is designed to ensure development at a minimum density that promotes growth and the efficient use of land. This relates roughly to six units an acre. So to me, the GIS analysis, while interesting, it's not surprising. I would expect to find densities around 5.5 or six units per acre throughout the medium-density zone. In my mind, the as-built environment perfectly fits this qualifier of density. For that reason, I have some reservations about giving full weight to this block-capacity analysis as well. It, too, is based really on the 16 units per acre without taking into consideration minimum lot size, what it would take to achieve that density in terms of land-assemblage time, feasibility, cost, demolition costs, lot construction, reconsolidation, excuse me, resubdivision, and then new construction. Just using the 7,000 per square foot minimum requirement and applying that as an additional factor, I came up with 24 units altogether that could be added to the city, to these five blocks. And that assumes that somehow you can jigger the parcels to get a new house or something in there. And that's a far cry from the 230 number. I'm dubious you could even calculate, add these 24 homes, because you'd face the same obstacles of assembling the land. And then on top of that, if you're building market-rate housing, you've got the obstacle that only nine permits are issued a year. So in my mind, the, the real view is that the medium-density district is currently under control by virtue of the minimum lot area requirements and the use regulations that prohibit construction of multifamily dwellings. I don't think there's a pressing need to jump into creation of a new district. I think what we need to do is take the time to analyze this. I, I concur with the staff that neighborhood character, the goals and policies of the plan are legitimate points of inquiry. Those are the things we're supposed to be looking at, the goals and policies of the plan. But I don't think that factor alone carries the day as far as demonstrating that this new proposal is in compliance with our plan and specifically is consistent with our housing element. It's hard for me to justify the mapping of this new proposed district. I don't know the rationale behind which blocks and parcels were included and which were left out. It appears that we've simply left the neighborhoods with housing opportunity parcels alone and downzoned all the rest of the medium-density district to this new district. To me, the map doesn't represent sound planning policy. This newly-created district includes land that fronts on both sides of Main Street, north of the commercial area, and on other blocks located within three blocks of Main Street. Good planning would normally dictate that we implement regulations for those districts to encourage greater density at that, at those locations. We should perhaps consider this map alongside the proposed mapping of the proposed mixed-use district, which is another technique that can foster more affordable and workforce housing. In my view, we've taken sort of a blunt instrument here to this task instead of a fine tool. There's the suggestion that we have to hurry because it's only a matter of time before the economics of development and the progressive state preemption of local authority in relation to housing development change our situation. Some see it as a virtual certainty over the 20-year timeframe of the general plan that the city will face proposals to build multiple-family projects up to 16 units per acre in many of the city's existing single-family neighborhoods with little discretion. On the economic question, I, I don't think this applies to market-driven development. I think any developer would be hard-pressed to try to assemble the land and come to the city to get a rezoning or a text amendment to the medium-density district in order to put a multifamily dwelling in there. It's not, it's not entitled to do it, and I, I think it would discourage that, along with the fact that there's only nine permits a year for market-rate housing. So perhaps the real concern is that the economics of developing affordable housing will improve or will continue to fail in our efforts to build affordable housing, and state preemption will force us to designate more sites in the next cycle. We have a plan in place for the first eight years. We've taken the necessary steps to create the sites and hope that the housing opportunities begin to happen. I don't think that this is the way to go, to get out from under the virtual certainty that is predicted in this case. This rezoning makes it difficult to scatter sites. We're squeezing affordable housing into a few neighborhoods, and we're beginning to see the reaction to that approach. It seems to make it, to make it more difficult for developers to create and for the city to respond to unique and creative projects that might arise on any unique and creative projects that might arise on any particular parcel or parcels in the city. It seems that by this downzoning, we are putting further roadblocks in our way and actually accelerating towards that virtual certainty instead of progressing towards meeting goals by which we could achieve full local control over the issue. So before we can adopt this downzoning change, I believe that the planning commission and the city council are called on to properly evaluate the impact of this proposal on the goals and policies of the plan, including our housing element. We need to be comfortable that we can make the required findings with respect to this proposal or perhaps some modification of it. And for all these reasons, I cannot recommend to the city council that we include establishment of this downzoned residential district in the plan we are nearly set to adopt, and I strongly reaffirm my position from the last meeting. And I will say no more.
Thank you, Commissioner Koberstein. That was amazing. Who wants to follow that up?
You walk on water, too. Well, I agree with everything you said that I understood, and I'm assuming that I probably agreed with the things you said that I didn't understand, which was a lot. I mean particularly, I mean, if we, to my mind, if we open this zoning up to change, then we need to look at all the zoning issues that are so, that have not been decided, including the Hunter property zoning and the high-density zoning on, you know, in certain areas. So, you know, if one goes, then they all need to be looked at, and I think that wouldn't fit in with the desire to get the general plan completed. But I would go on to say that because of these issues, I think it's really important to get a commitment from the planning department and the city council and us that we will revisit the zoning. We have four times a year that we can look at these things, and I think we should, part of, I really think it's absolutely imperative that we set up a time to do that if we're going to approve the general plan without these changes, without vetting all these zoning issues that have been coming up. And I think that we can only do that if we make an agreement to start vetting the, all the zoning issues in town ASAP after the general plan is submitted. We have that right to change the general plan four times a year, and I would really, really want to recommend that that would happen if we go ahead and accept the general plan. If we're going to take more time and open it up so that we can vet all of these issues, including city design standards and all these zoning issues that have come up, then I think that we really, the part that I really could identify with is balance, excuse me, is getting consistency between the goals, some of the goals to neighborhood preservation, even distribution of housing and these other things, and the zoning that we're looking at, because it seems to me that there is not consistency. There's, it could be argued there that there's a lot of inconsistency in these two areas. And it might mean that we'd have to change the housing element, too. We can do that. That's not impossible to do. So I agree with, wholeheartedly with what Commissioner Koberstein said, and I would like to add that if we do go ahead and with the general plan update, without making any of these changes and just get it done, because that's what we're trying to do, that we absolutely have a date for a meeting to start vetting these other issues, to make changes as soon as possible.
Could I ask just one clarification of Noah, I think it would be from? One of the comments made was to the effect that because we require 7,000 square feet for a lot for a single-family home to be built on, that is really tied more to our ordinances, correct, which will be followed in the zoning when we, the intention is once the general plan is approved, we would then go make the ordinances consistent with the general plan. But the only, and I agree with and found a lot of interesting information in what Mary discussed, however, that piece seemed backwards to me.
That's exactly right. So the general plan is essentially the constitution for land use in the city. The zoning code needs to implement that.
Right.
From the staff perspective, you should designate parcels how you want them to be developed in the future, and this plan is intended for 35, until 2035. And so again, getting back to some of the analysis and the staff report of the discussions, with all deference to Commissioner Koberstein's points, which are valid, at the same time, designating a majority of your single-family neighborhoods, many of which are historically designated also in the general plan, for a density and development type other than what's there that you've identified as intended to be preserved is not a logical land use designation for the city from staff's perspective. And getting back to some of the referencing to the findings, to your point, again, the general plan supersedes the zoning code in hierarchy. So referencing zoning findings in a general plan decision, the entire point of this exercise, because also to Bobby's points, the general plan and the zoning code have not had regular updates. That is typically what cities do, but it hasn't been done in St. Helena, probably because of lack of staff resources. It hasn't allowed regular kind of maintenance work to be done on both of these documents. So it's intended for the staff or staff's intent to, once the general plan is done, essentially the entire zoning code is going to need to be cleaned up and rewritten as well to implement the land use changes in the general plan. And I'd just like to use the 7,000 square foot lot sizes as a perfect example of where the general plan says 18 units per acre, I'm sorry, 16 units per acre maximum, but the zoning says 7,000 square foot lot sizes. Those points are counterintuitive to each other. How are you really going to construct 16 units per acre if that's really what we want on those parcels if you're requiring 7,000 square foot lot sizes? And that's some of the issues that we, as the practitioners of land use, trying to apply the zoning code, have to answer these questions to people who knock on the door and come through the office every day and say, well, you know, I want to do X, Y, and Z on my property. And then I have to say, okay, well, this regulation says this, and this regulation says the complete opposite. And so we're constantly trying to thread the needle to address these contradictions. And so those are the challenges that we were trying to address with some of these land use changes. And again, getting back to the point, from staff's perspective, you should designate the properties how you want them to develop in the future with the land use designations that are appropriate. And Commissioner Koberstein is perfectly right. There is not a pressing need, we don't have developers banging down the door to knock down all of our historic homes. However, if the intention is to be clear with your land use policy, this is where we want certain types of development, and this is where we want it. Staff doesn't see the logic of designating a majority of your single-family neighborhoods. You want to remain a single-family for multifamily development. From the staff's perspective, what we would like to do is make this change and then implement the direction Commissioner Monet and Commissioner Koberstein have said, to go back and look at where do we want higher densities sprinkled throughout these parcels, or throughout these neighborhoods? What parcels are more likely to be able to be developed to accommodate that growth? And where would that most appropriately fit? So that's the staff perspective on it. The commission obviously has a very strong perspective of their own, but this is the perspective from the individuals who are tasked with implementing and explaining these regulations on a daily basis.
And could I ask just one other further clarification back to the housing element? My understanding of what we've approved in the housing development, what's come back from the state is approved, is that regardless if we can change, we can fit zones to accommodate housing, that housing supersedes. So regardless of what we end up with here, if we decide XYZ lot is where we want to put a affordable housing unit, it can fast-track through all of this?
That's exactly right. And there's even a case, a case law that was forwarded from the city attorney today that this, I'm not sure, oh, it's a rider to a bill that's going through the process right now that the governor's most likely to sign that will essentially eliminate SEQA and discretionary review for affordable housing projects.
Well, I have a, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add one point, just as a matter of clarification and the, just to clarify, the issues brought up that you would have to assemble parcels and therefore any development or higher intensity is unlikely. It's not the case. If you have a 7,000 square foot parcel, which is the minimum lot size, and the density is 16 units an acre, the way the density calculation works is, and you round up, if you have a fraction, you'd be able to stick a triplex on that. So no assembly is needed. So in effect, every single lot that is 7,000 square feet in the medium-density zone, somebody, they would need a use permit, but they could apply for putting a triplex on that lot. So no assembly is needed. Just, so I think that's important to clarify. Now, as Noah indicates, the likelihood of that is small, but I think it's pretty unusual. You have a city where the vast majority of the single-family neighborhoods are zoned for the density of a triplex, and from a procedural standpoint, somebody could come in tomorrow with a plan to put one up.
But they would have to have a use permit. I really feel that since there's no rush, there is no reason to put this in the general plan at this point when we get our, we can do all the rezoning, all this rezoning that you're talking about, at the same time, particularly since there's a lot of public pushback about it. And I don't see any reason to try to, what's the point of trying to get this in the general plan? We weren't going to open up the general plan for any significant changes. I mean, that's what I remember hearing. So I don't understand the urgency of having this when we're, I think this should be vetted when the whole city, when the whole zoning, when the whole kit and the bootle.
Do we have, I mean, this is one area that I don't, at least to my knowledge, we haven't had a lot of pushback on, because what this is actually saying is, we want to protect neighborhoods and have, I mean, what we've heard tonight is, don't put out.
I was going to say.
And zoning, you can't keep putting the zoning first. Zoning comes after this.
Well, people who, people who aren't, don't have an interest in the west side of town are not feeling that way. They're, you know, I mean, I've heard some pushback. Maybe you haven't, okay, but I have.
And I don't think this is, should be viewed as an east-west. I think it's a rationalization of what already exists, building the hierarchy correctly, and then coming back and dealing with.
Well, I want to point out that the argument that you want the appropriate distance from town, I mean, you know, from the main street and services of Main Street, that's where you want to build. You want to build the multifamily housing closest possible to Main Street. Well, the high-density zoned areas in this town are the same distance from Main Street as Allen Street is. And that Allen Street is most of that district that's going to be, that wants to be rezoned, that the city wants to rezon to low-medium. So that's an inconsistency that I think simply tells me we need to look at this more carefully before approving it, because that is creating an east-west situation. I mean, you can say it's not, but it is.
I'd just like to address some of those issues. So I've done a little research to see, because it was brought up, that this is kind of a last-minute thing and is bringing brought up, but it's my understanding that this discussion started in 2009 with that, the adoption of that housing element, which identified this issue of why are we designating a majority of our single-family neighborhoods? We want to remain single-family for a multifamily designation. So that question was raised in 2009, and it's been an ongoing question and discussion, which is why it's before the planning commission as a part of the general plan update. I would add overwhelmingly, the vast amount of comments we received through this process has been on preserving the character of the community, overwhelmingly. And the only comments that have been viewed by staff regarding concerns over high-density levels have been requests, like we've heard tonight, from two folks requesting further reductions of density of existing parcels who are designated for high-density or that have the potential for higher-density developments as they relate to low-density neighborhoods, like the two comments that came with public comments today.
Yes, I mean, absolutely, people are going to be in favor of this, who are invested in this in one way or another. The people who are in the areas that are opportunity sites in the medium-density and in the high-density zones don't feel that way at all. They don't feel that this is a good idea because this puts the onus on those areas alone to take the, to take all of the new housing. So it is, you know, so there is, there are differences of opinion depending on where your vested interests are. And I do think that we need to take great care in making, giving the impression and actually making it a reality that this is done in an open and fair-minded way so that the, so that we.
I'd like to talk. I'm really concerned, I think the biggest issue that Commissioner Koberstein has and I have as well, yes, this might have been a question in 2009, but it feels very much like a knee-jerk reaction to the housing element, to somewhat protect St. Helena neighborhoods, which, yes, I'm absolutely for, but it's also going to completely do away with any future low-income or workforce housing in this new low-medium zone. And the opportunity, which I think is just a great word, I just wrote down opportunity, that opportunity there to mix it in. And, you know, Victor had mentioned that, you know, well, we can go in afterwards and look at these sites and see where we could put in more of the workforce housing that we could have. Well, we could also not rush this and look at this low-medium after the general plan's approved. And I think that's what Commissioner Koberstein's asking for, is more analysis and more of an in-depth research before we make this decision. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I think we're required to do the analysis.
I just don't think there's been enough of a public forum for it to be really vetted.
I think we're required, not just to see how the density matches what's on the ground. I believe we're required to do the analysis on which basis this planning commission and the city council can conclude that this downzoning is consistent with the plan.
It might be, it might be absolutely what we need to have done.
On its face, right off the bat, it's clearly not.
I just don't think there's been enough research to actually make that decision.
I mean, the zoning ordinance itself, which says that in this district, approval of a general plan amendment is required to reduce density for other reasons.
This is a general plan update.
This is just talking about reducing density in this district. In approving a general plan amendment, the city council and planning commission shall make the findings in section 1712110, which are, take a look at what you're doing with density in comparison to the goals and policies of the plan. That's what I think we are called upon to do. I think it's going to take time. I don't see it in this timeframe. I'm not disagreeing that somebody can build a triplex. It's provided in this district. You can do it by use permit. I don't think everybody's going to start doing it all over town, but in fact, our plan recommends that we encourage it. I'm taking issue with the use of the word apartment building, which, you know, scares a lot of people. It's not even allowed in this district. I mean, there's no, there is no multifamily dwelling unit allowed in this district by permitted use or special use permit. It's not.
Again, I just think that the.
So I don't want to argue with you. I think we just need to take a step back, take this out, do the analysis that we should do.
I'd like just for the record to clarify that we're not talking about an amendment. We're talking about the general plan.
That's exactly right. This is not a general plan.
We're still putting the cart before the horse.
That is completely accurate. This is not, the findings required for a general plan amendment are not required to be made in making a general plan update. It is apples and oranges from a land use perspective.
We're working from the top down.
But again, we don't need to get into an argument, and I completely understand the commission's perspective, and we, I think we've thoroughly vetted the issue in addition to the discussion that happened last week. But to clarify, this is a general plan update, which then will re, the entire zoning code process will be re-updated to also implement the general plan direction.
Well, I still think. I would submit, if you're doing this on this scale, you should be looking at your consistency with the plan.
And I think we should put it off until we can take the careful.
I still understand that statement.
Okay, well, let's take some of the statements in the plan. You know, put workforce housing in the medium and high-density districts. We've just taken 60% of the medium-density land away. You've kind of shrunk the opportunities to do that. I sort of went through some of them. I think that's the analysis that needs to, that we need to go through. You may end up reconfiguring the district slightly differently. You may end up changing the density range.
It might stay exactly the same.
It might.
But I just, I think it needs further analysis.
So let's put it off until we meet again after the general plan, which should be as quickly as possible, and then we can do a thorough vetting. I mean, I think that's what we're saying. I mean, that's what I'm hearing Commissioners Parker and Koberstein saying, and possibly
Yeah, I disagree for different reasons, but I'm clearly the minority, so I think we need to move on with the conversation.
Yeah, all right.
But I do want it for the record, this is the general plan, this is not an amendment. The 7,000 square foot is tied to the zoning, and zoning, the general plan supersedes zoning, zoning comes next, and ordinance follow that. So I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I just want to go on record for myself on that.
All right. I would just add one thing. I assume we're probably going to stick with the 7,000 square foot limit. Otherwise, you're going to make a lot of, if you raise it, you have the possible.
I don't think we really can answer that because it's a zoning, not a. I don't think we really can answer that because it's it's a zoning, not a general plan question.
I will say, the goal of revising the zoning code was to make it to where it could implement the general plan, which would be to make the lot sizes in medium-density significantly smaller so that way it could accommodate the densities that are identified in the general plan designation of medium-density currently.
Right. That's a very important point because what Noah just said is they're not going to stay at 7,000, they'll have to go smaller to fit 16 units. That is a big deal that I hope our public's listening to.
That's the point I'm trying to make, is the zoning code update is supposed to implement the general plan. So if you have a density range dictated by the general plan, your zoning, your land-use regulations, setbacks, lot sizes, all of those things should allow that density to be implemented. It currently doesn't. They contradict each other and makes it difficult for us to provide good direction to people who are asking how to develop property. That's a staff perspective, again, from someone who tries to explain it on a daily basis.
And I understand that. I just think that with the amount of time that this general plan has been in existence and been revised, I think that this is kind of a knee-jerk reaction.
As a minority, I pull back, but I just, I want all those things on the record because there's a very important fact that I think people are going to come back to at some point and say, what were you thinking?
And I also want to just kind of reiterate that when you close off a bunch of area where it could have been done, it's going to go someplace else. And there has to be consistency in those other places with respect to neighborhood preservation, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why it has to be a full, a full vetting. Okay.
All right. With that, I think that we will move on to chapter three, and I will open up the public.
Can I ask one question about that?
Of course.
And I guess we're back from Citizens Voice because the letter that's come in that we need to discuss is actually the next element, right?
Yes, that's correct, yes. So with that, I'm going to reopen the public hearing to invite the public to comment on chapter three, economic sustainability. Would anyone like to speak at the public? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and invite Commissioner to discuss. So this was just to go over the letter from Citizens Voice about the adding the verbiage for tourism.
The winery stuff?
And the winery stuff as well.
No, winery stuff.
No, winery's land use, I'm sorry.
We didn't add that. We moved, that never came up in discussion.
Well, we can't because that wasn't, why, could we have discussed it under that?
Under GCS.
Someone needed to raise it. Public comment did, but it had to come up on the DS.
Oh, I didn't know, I thought I couldn't.
But you know, in an effort to keep moving it forward so we don't just say we're chapter two and three, we can bring it up the the next meeting because we're going to go.
I thought it was, I thought that since it wasn't agendized, since that particular thing wasn't agendized, I couldn't bring it up. So I was being, I was trying to be very diligent about.
No, we're reviewing the general plan. Anything in the general plan is open game.
Well, I would like to say something if if you, it won't be long, I haven't written it out or anything, but I think, I think, I don't think it's an unreasonable request to ask.
To be perfectly honest, Bobby, I'd like to marinate on the letter and the petition and discuss it at the next meeting and let us think about it. But absolutely, we'll bring it up at the next meeting, but let's keep going so we can get at least to chapter four tonight. Okay, but definitely next meeting. All right, so with that, there was no public comment on chapter three, economic sustainability. Are there any commissioners' opinions on the Citizens Voice letter about, do we like, I'll just pose a question, do we like some of the verbiage that they have in that letter? Do we feel it is beneficial to add it in snippets, or is it something that we just kind of want to?
I think so. I mean, at our last meeting, one thing we were discussing was caps, and it was being discussed in the context of this letter. And Commissioner Kissner, who's not here tonight, made mention of a recent article in the Press Democrat about what was going on in Heelsburg, which I went back and took a look at it to see what it had to say. And they've decided to remove their caps on dwelling units or put a referendum out, I believe. But in the context of their discussion, what they were talking about was the fact that they felt that they had perhaps overemphasized tourism in the community, and it was having a negative impact on housing, the kinds of comments we hear here all the time, that our neighborhoods are being hollowed out and whatever. And in in my mind, this letter from Citizens Voice tries to strike what I think is a more healthy balance on tourism promotion, and I would encourage the council to take a strong look at it.
I agree.
I am also in agreement. Commissioner Sweeney?
I think there are some elements within the letter that I can support. I think you have three, so you move on to the council.
Okay.
To them, based on comment. But there are others that I would disagree with.
Oh, I absolutely don't think that all of them should go, and I think that it's definitely an item-by-item type situation.
But I especially like the, the, at least the encouragement to consider the cumulative effects of not only St. Helena, but the rest of the valley and how, because what we do affects everything, what Calistoga does, et cetera. And I particularly, I think that's really important. I don't know if St. Helena, I don't know if there's anything going on between the cities and the county to start to deal with that aspect of the growth in this county. And I would want to promote the, you know, to really promote the idea with this city to pursue working with other cities and the counties when trying to get a policy perhaps, or at least, at least starting the dialogue on how we need to, how everyone needs to kind of pull together here before we shoot ourselves in the foot and, you know, what is it, do you kill the golden egg that's feeding you, whatever?
It would be helpful.
For clarity, I was going to ask for clarity from Noah. Do you need input by line item on what we want to support and what we don't?
It would be helpful for staff in passing on recommendation for the for the commission if there if there are concerns with with certain sections versus support, that is helpful.
All right, well, does everyone have the copy of the letter?
And we don't need to get into the the very, you know, no wordsmithing is necessary, but just, you know, generally supportive of the concept.
Conceptually.
Yeah.
Of course, I have my copy. No, we got the last meeting. Or there's two meetings ago, I'm sorry. I guess, so to start, people who have copies, the two dash two community developed framework, the overarching.
Right.
Oh, look, we have in a copy, thank you. Okay. Oh, I have one, yes.
No, I haven't.
Okay. Perfect. So in the highlighted red or the new letter underlined in black, is there anything that draws out that is very strong rather than that you would like to have added, or is there just more of a conceptual that you would like to add?
This is the area that I would not be in agreement with. I think that the current draft that speaks to sustainable tourism and economic sustainability in in total, I think, addresses this issue well. I think that when we get into some of the specific room caps and having to evaluate that, I could be more supportive around it. But I think the idea that there's a general consensus that tourism is in itself is a bad thing, I think the current verbiage speaks better to the fact that we want sustainable economic approaches to all that we're doing here. Yeah, 2.2. The general gist of that is that the town felt that tourism is in general.
I can agree with that, that that's, I think that it's sufficient as on itself.
Like it or not, this is a valley based on tourism as a part of our economic condition, and I think as we would be an outlier in Napa Valley to say that we deemed it a negative influence.
But that's the point I was trying to make. It is, it is the lifeblood, but there's a critical mass after which it's going to be.
But I think that gets to their other elements where they say they want to have economic impact studies. I think that's there, very valid. I think the idea around a reasonable maximum hotel room that the community can support, I think those are all very rational, thoughtful commentary and and have a rightful place in the general plan. But I think that the overall commentary that the town feels that tourism is a negative thing in general, which is really what they're saying in 2.2, I would tend to strike and move on to the more pragmatic tools they're trying to provide, which are some kind of quantity around total lodging, some kind of.
I hear what you're saying.
Or defined retail mix. I think those are all very pragmatic tools, but I think the general statement disallowing or negatively kind of throwing tourism into in itself a negative construct, I think, would overstep my what I can support.
Well, maybe it can be reworded because I think this is the place where, you know, I mean, Calistoga builds what they want to build for their TOT, where you build what we want to build for our TOT, and that attitude, you know, that we can do whatever we want, you know, for to to increase tourism so that our economic base, you know, our economy improves. I think that attitude without without consideration of maybe starting a dialogue so that we're all working together and not each kind of blindly going ahead, trying to get as much as each entity can get, the county included, for their revenue, and then boom, it's, there's going to be a critical mass and it's going to go over. I don't, I think that maybe there's could be language added here that there would be the beginning of a dialogue between the cities and the county so that, so that we would have a sense of what we should be encouraging in terms of the whole valley, not just our TOT, or not, that's, that's.
But I would argue that that kind of overarching commentary is included.
Yeah, I would.
So you don't like the language here, there could be.
So I don't like, I don't like.
I don't think, I think that what we have now is is more than sufficient.
The foundational ideas, and then you can get into what I heard loud and clear was they felt there were some, the the group around Citizens Voice felt that some of the perspic, the kind of guideposts and prescriptive pragmatic types of things are missing from the plan.
Like definition of chain stores might be nice to add.
And so again, you know, I think that I would leave, I would leave it to the wisdom of the council of which of those they bring in, but I would not support 2.2. The others, I believe, start adding a little bit more definition that could be helpful.
All right, so with that, Commissioner Koberstein?
Yeah.
Are you in agreement with the 2.2?
Yeah, I think this is an area where it really lacks historical perspective. Since I've been here. What I see is a number of cases we deal with about tourist-related businesses in the central business district that we're trying to limit. So I'm not, I'm not sure where we stand on this, you know, it's, and I, I'm just reading right now, I apologize for taking time to read this, but I'm looking at page three dash four in the economic sustainability.
Oh, the existing tension? Statement?
Yeah, and it says that, you know, there's a consensus among the local business community that they require the support of both local residents and visitors. That's understandable.
I think that that's Commissioner Sweeney's point exactly, that that those concerned are addressed.
But then, when it goes on to say, the attempt to differentiate between local and tourist-serving businesses does not address economic vitality and sustainability needs. But it does address, I think, community character and those other issues that we were just talking about. So I'm hoping we're not losing entirely the concept of local businesses and promoting, promoting them, whatever, however we decide to define them, which is something I'm always struggling with when we have these cases.
And I think that's the whole, I'm sorry, I believe that's the whole point of this letter is that kind of you move past, you know, their version of an overarching statement versus what I think is done well already in the in the current draft of the plan, is that they do want to then bring in and more tightly and and completely define some of those things, you know. Again, I personally have a little bit of a challenge of how, how you define local serving, and I think that's been the crux of our problem all these years, is that it depends which local you ask, you know, a local can be anything from I need jeans and a ball mit for my kid to I need a new blue baton bag. So I, and unfortunately, it really does depend who you ask. So I, I think it's better to be a little vague around that, but I do like some of their thoughts around that the ownership or the, you know, not, you know, having single, a single unit versus a chain, that we want some.
Yeah, I think the.
Clarity around who who the proprietors are and that they are part of the community. I think those are all very valid. I think when you get into goods and services, it becomes very personal what's local serving and what is not, so I don't think we should frame that so tightly, but I think there are some valid points in here.
Would you be more open to, let's say, 2.2 if it said discourage the introduction of uses that compromise the quality of life for St. Helena residents by significantly increasing the total number of tourists?
No, I think what's already in the draft is fine, so it would be hard to put, back to the idea that we don't want a wordsmith. I feel that we've stated it pretty well in the economic, in the.
Which one, where is it?
If you read the, actually what.
It's on three dash four.
The three dot four.
Yeah, there's an existing tension between the desire to prevent St. Helena from becoming overwhelmed with tourist-serving businesses and activities and the reality that a substantial portion of the local employment base and the city's revenue base are dependent upon the flow of tourism dollars to St. Helena. That's on, it's on page 3.4.
Because what this does is it talks, it speaks to both challenges, not just one viewpoint.
Yeah.
And I think that the Citizens Voice letter is clearly one viewpoint, which is, I respect the viewpoint, but I just think that.
So what I'm hearing is that we do like the idea of possibly chain stores, a definition to be included, and I know that from talking with city staff that they are also in agreement with that move. There seems to be a lot of verbiage about the protection of quality of life for St. Helena City residents.
I would argue that's also built into a lot of the plan here.
Kind of built in as well.
Throughout the narrative across the element.
To go to ES 2.3, that's the cap element, that's a little bit more of a pragmatic move.
And I believe if I interpret this right, which, again, that's the toughest thing about all of this, that this is saying, leave it, it's a reasonable number, it's not giving us a number, which then becomes in ordinance in a zoning issue.
Unflexible for municipal code.
So again, this is saying the idea of having such a structure is valid, but not providing detail.
If I could just jump in from a staff standpoint, I think caps can be kind of a double-edged sword. I think it's, if you're going to do caps, you have to have strong criteria in terms of what it is you're looking for. To me, caps, I, I think criteria in and of itself, if it's written properly, can be sufficiently specific and and get at the kind of key issues that you may not need to go to caps. The caps sound good in concept, but as a practical point of view, they can be problematic. You simply get into the question of, you create a scarce resource by creating a cap, then the issue becomes how do you reserve it? What counts as it being used or not used? Rodney, as you know, has an approval for a hotel that's been out there for 20 years, and so are those units used or not used? I think you also create an expectation of if somebody is coming in and there is room under the cap, then that person might think, well, I should get approved. There's room under the cap, why can't you approve me? Almost the thing that happens in the FAR discussions when somebody wants to go. So I, I think caps can be problematic. From a staff standpoint, I, I think the the more critical thing or maybe more valuable is to come up with criteria that that need to be met in terms of.
Stress on water resources, that sort of.
Right, and even locational in terms of focusing, in terms of accessing off Highway 29, that the site's large enough to, you know, to create the kind of hotel you can talk about, the kind of market niche you're looking for. So from a staff standpoint, I think that's, that's one area that the the general plan as it's currently written could benefit from. And then if if that criteria isn't sufficient, then maybe you could look at going to caps, but I really think it's might be a better place to start.
How do I feel about that? That definitely is, sounds reasonable to me to.
I guess on that one, I would have to go back to Noah and say no wordsmithing either. We are support, the, the council picks up this conversation as it relates to somehow better defining what hotel development looks like.
The appropriateness of hotel development.
In St. Helena.
Okay.
That I could support.
What do you think about, I, I really like ES 3 dot E.
Why don't we do 2 dot A first?
Okay.
Which is the continued to prohibit formula restaurants and chain retail stores. I think that we kind of hit with that with the definition of a chain store, adding that into it. And again, that's the cap situation.
I will say on this one that, you know, somewhat, this is kind of going back, I think, to the same challenge we had before with the zoning, is that we have today retailers and have had come and go retailers who have multiple units. That doesn't make them a national chain. So I would be a little hesitant to use the term chain retail because I think that gets us right back to the problem that we have today. I think the idea that I was comfortable with in their reasoning behind this is that this should be someone who has some vested interest in our community that is not headquartered in Nebraska. And I think that that, that speaks loudly to the the culture of our town, but to simply say someone has more than one unit, you know, that that takes out anybody who might live in Yountville just because that's where they live and today want to establish a store here and there as well, or, you know, St. Helena that has, you know, we actually have proprietors on Main Street today that have multiple locations, so even though they don't call them the same name. So I think I'd be a little hesitant to use that term.
Yeah, so staff is supportive of the concept of even, of even eliminating chain or prohibiting chain stores if that's direction. However, this definition is somewhat problematic, and so.
Yeah, it's a little too tight.
If that was the direction, then staff. If that was the direction, then staff could work on some language. Essentially, we would add a general plan implementing policy that said to eliminate or prohibit chain retail establishments, and then we would work through the zoning code process to create a definition for what a chain store is.
Was there, wasn't there some talk at some point about, you know, that if, if the owners or the proprietors lived in the town, that that was actually?
I don't think we can mandate that. I think that.
No, I'm not, okay, but I.
Yeah, I, I, I think spiritually and philosophically, it's a nice idea, and I, and I support that concept, but I think you can really, that would be difficult. We think it's hard to, to follow up on things today, to know where some.
All right, and then ES three dot E. Commissioner Monette?
Oh, well, I, I like, I especially like the idea of having a third party, you know, help make, help make these decisions, because I think, you know, and help make these analysis.
I will say that, just to throw in, how much scrutiny the city gets under every time we hire another consultant, so.
Yeah.
I think to build that into our general plan is a problem, not.
And I think that.
All due respect for the present company, but that comes up every other public hearing.
Well, to the extent that, that, that you want overs, you know, that there's oversight for this stuff, I, I don't think it's, it doesn't say we have to, but I think, who's going to do the analysis? I mean, our staff can't do the analysis, because that's the other thing staff says all the time, they don't have enough staff to do these analyses.
I would put that to council again, that the idea of taking a look at these things and having impact studies are important. Who does them, how that's defined, I would think that's just too tight for the.
They're really, that's their direction, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's a general plan comment.
Okay, well, I would like the city council to look at it and, and, okay, see what they think.
Perfect, anything else to add for chapter three?
I just, I just have a question. Where in here, unless I missed it, where, where does it say that we are actually going to promote the local businesses or try to assist them? I mean, I'm aware of one case now where we have a business in town, it's been here a long time, and wants to move, and they're, you know, caught in our process of needing potentially a permit. I don't want to comment too much on that case, but it, it seems to me that businesses that are here and have been here, there should be maybe some accommodation to help them stay here without an interruption in their business, you know, and not get caught up in some of our process.
I totally agree with that, yeah.
Can that, without weighing this down, can that be put in as just a general comment that we would, that we support? And, and I think it speaks a little bit to the Citizens Voice letter, is that, you know, all things being equal, we will, we want to support ongoing proprietors and local businesses. I mean, I don't know, something fairly vague, but that speaks to that sentiment, that if you're doing business here and you're a good contributor, we're going to try not to put you through the wringer, if there's a way to put that into words.
Yeah, I think a general policy could definitely be, could definitely implemented or included, or recommended that the council direct us to include regarding supporting local businesses. With, without getting into the details of the case Commissioner Koberstein's referencing, it is challenging to, to do that and also still treat everyone the same.
Right.
And that's, that's frankly, some of the issues I've seen in land use decisions in St. Helena, is it matters who's at the podium.
Yeah.
And, and that is a, a very concerning element of land use decisions that, from a staff's perspective, we want to remove from our independent review of each action.
But if it were defined, that we would support people who had been here for, you know, two years or more, whatever, everyone could get that, to get, could get to that category eventually, they just have to stay. So, I mean, of, you know, of course, anytime we subsidize anybody, it's special.
I guess the question is, is it, is it more appropriate in the general plan, or is it more important, important to change some of our zoning and the municipal code?
Well, I mean, it would, it would be depending on what the intent is regarding specific situations. I mean, without, again, trying to, so if you just had a general policy in the general plan, like, how, how is that going to direct staff to do something with the zoning code? It, it's uncertain how a, a general policy that said, you know, continue to support locally-serving businesses that have been in, in business for over 10 years, or something like that, what would that translate into? What would we do with the zoning regulation that would continue to support them?
Maybe you could transport a use permit to another site.
Or could you speak to it, I mean, similar to insurance, that if you go X amount of years without an accident, your rates go down. So I mean, is there a way to?
Nationwide.
Yeah, is there a way to somehow say that, you know?
I, I mean, I could.
Policy or zoning can be built towards.
It seems, it seems like a policy simply about the importance of business retention and something along those lines.
Something along those lines, I think, okay.
Even, even as simple as that, that, you know, this, the, is part of our economic sustainability, that we will make every, we will make effort to retain our businesses.
All right.
And not lose them to other towns.
Yeah, okay. Anything else to add? All right, moving on to chapter four. Victor, would you like to go over your little, your brief staff report for the water use and supply and the existing and the, did you want to go over that, that part from your?
Um, I don't have.
Page six of 11 of your?
Yeah, it's in there. Let me just quickly. Okay, hold on.
Good lord, it's getting warm in here.
Yeah. Yeah, in the staff report, it talks about some of the key changes between the 93 plan and the, and the new plan, the, and the most significant ones really are around the issue of water usage and the whole of, the whole idea of no net, increased impact, and so the, the new plan essentially codifies a variety of programs and policies that were approved by the city essentially from right around 2011 to 2013. So that's one of the key things, and then there's the water, simply information about water usage, et cetera. There, kind of interestingly, in terms of the old general plan, the 93 plan or the current plan, it doesn't have anything about fire and police, and so there's a, a section that deals with that, and that obviously is critical and important, particularly if the city at some point in the future wants to, or has to come up with some sort of funding mechanism to support a certain basic level of, of, of service. And frankly, when you're doing fiscal impacts, if you don't have a benchmark to compare against, there's really no way of doing it. So that's one new thing that's been added to this section, and then kind of alluding to some of the previous discussion on Hunter, there's discussion about flood control, and clearly that's one of the major things that has happened since the, the 93 plan, so that's memorialized. So that's just a quick overview.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for Victor? All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing on public facilities and services. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, everyone cleared out, pretty much. I'm going to close the public hearing and invite commissioner discussion. Is there anything that anyone would like to add?
I'm supportive of those.
Yeah.
I think they're essential.
Is it, does everyone agree that it's appropriate for the general plan to talk about the sale of the wine train and, and that? Is that, is that something that should be in the, in the general plan?
It, it was in the 93 plan for what, so the 93 plan had discussion and policies and relevant to the wine train, so then the, essentially, so we kind of brought it forward and updated it.
I think it is important, is, for that reason specifically, because the sentiment has been built from the 93 terminology and narrative in here, and that there has been, I think, a relaxing in some of those views that needs to be codified in the plan.
And, and the other thing is just, you know, that is a, whether it's the wine train or, or a different train, that is a significant resource that, that can serve the community, the, the fact that there are railroad tracks running through the community.
I know, yeah, I'm aware of that, but the, the motivation for the relaxing that you're referring to is from a particular part of the community, and we really haven't vetted that, the wine train issue, I don't think adequately to the public to know what to put in the general plan.
I would argue that with all of the multiple readings of the general plan, I mean, I, I think to come back, there's, again, zoning was a completely different issue that was brought in later in the game, but some of this wording has going, is going back, it's very little, it's very, it's not much different than it was in 2010.
Almost verbatim.
Yeah, so this has been years of public hearings.
Well, I mean, the change, though, is based on, is not based on a full public hearing.
Yes, this change of words have been in there for years.
I understand.
The new draft, both drafts.
I have, I have a copy of the draft from 2011, I found it.
Similar. So, again, the zoning was not, but a lot of this, we've been, multiple dozens of public hearings.
I just don't under, I just don't think that, why do we have to change it at all? Why not just have it the way it was? Because I, I just object to the change, because I don't think, I know you're saying it was, people had an opportunity, but, you know, it didn't happen for a lot of reasons, and I don't think everyone heard that, you know, everyone is aware that, you know, that, that wine train might be stopping here and, you know, letting off passengers and so forth, and it was such a passionate and impassioned topic when it first happened. I don't, I don't know, I don't see why we need to make that change. I don't like it.
I think we're hearing from the commission that the language is appropriate.
Yeah, I think so as well.
Okay.
We're also dealing with completely different owners from the wine train than from 1993, and I haven't seen a no wine train sticker in a while, so. Used to have one. Never put it up. Anyways, so, okay, so that was chapter four. Wine train's also in circulation, chapter five. Victor, do you want to go over?
Just really quickly touch on the, the major changes. Probably the most significant ones have to do with the, the issue of the street extensions. The previous 93 plan pretty much assumed that the road extensions were going to happen, and the new plan creates a process whereby, before any of the identified street extensions happens, a series of studies need to be done and analyzed, so there really is some kind of cost-benefit analysis to the neighborhood as to whether the, what the actual extension makes sense. The, the previous draft, an earlier draft of the plan had gotten away from the traditional ABC traffic levels of service, and that's been reinstituted in the plan, the rail service we've just discussed, so those would probably be the, the main items.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, nope. Commissioner Koberstein, you look.
I just find it interesting that we're going to do a cost-benefit analysis here and not, you know, for other things. I mean, I, aren't there usually certain warrants that establish whether or not you should extend the street or put up a stop sign, or it's kind of cut and dried, isn't it?
Well, in terms of putting up signal, there, there are Caltrans standards for, you have to meet certain warrants. For extending the street, there really isn't. It's, it's completely up to, there, there are no set standards or criteria, so it's kind of a unique one in the sense that clearly there can be measurable traffic benefits, and you can see whether, by making the extension, as to whether some roads will meet the established service level that may not currently be meeting it. But the, there, there is no kind of formulaic approach to doing it, so to speak, so.
It sounds like an engineering analysis, basically, right? You know, you're trying to spread the level of service around or deal with a situation in one area by maybe providing some relief in another. I guess, I guess my question is, what, what is cost-benefit analysis in this context?
Well, and, and that was maybe more my word, I'm not sure if the text refers to it that way, but essentially, it's, it provides a process, so whereby, instead of the, the road assumed to be going through, it creates a, a checkpoint so that council will look at the benefits of the road, obviously putting the road in will have costs, whether it's a developer footing those at the city, and then, you know, a decision will be made. So it creates a process, but I, I agree, I think the bulk of the analysis will be an engineering analysis.
And the specific language, it says, "Any development project proposed on property located within the future alignment of the future roadway extensions, as depicted in figure 5.2, shall be as part of their, their review and entitlement process, shall, as a part of their review and entitlement process, be responsible for preparing a special study," is the terminology. "As described in this chapter, determine whether the subject extension will consist of the minimum bike pedestrian path improvement, or if the extension shall be constructed to also accommodate vehicular, auto, and truck traffic."
And, correct me, but I do believe that some of that language came out of specifically public hearing, because there are several streets within, Star being one of them, but there's a, it's off of Spring, there's, it's at Spring Court, there's others that, there's a lot of emotion around, I think, some of those locations, and so the idea that they would not be pursued without ample public hearing, ample discussion, ample analysis, I think.
The special studies giving credit to that.
This was the council, I think, responding to.
That's correct, and generally, more distributed circulation networks are our benefit. However, if you live on a street that's a dead end now and it becomes a thoroughfare, you're going to have concerns over that. So this allows kind of the individual impacts associated with a street extension to be balanced with the community-wide impacts or benefits of that extension and kind of have it vetted. I will say, this is somewhat challenging, again, to give direction to folks who are asking about what would they would be conditioned to do with a project. It's challenging to give direction, and further, it, it makes it difficult for CIP budgeting, because, you know, what's your, if a project's coming in and it has a, a potential to contribute to a percentage of a future roadway extension, but we don't know if that roadway is going to be for vehicular or bicycle impaired, the dollar amount tied to their percentage impact is very difficult for the city to tie to that project. So engineering, Public Works Department has expressed concern over this, however, just getting to Commissioner Sweeney's point, I think this is a compromise, essentially a political compromise, to allow individual discussions of each of these, these roadway extensions as they pertain to individual projects to address community concerns.
Perfect. Any other questions of staff? All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone, would anyone like to discuss circulation?
I don't know if mine is circulation, I just want a question in general. How, I, I understand when they were going to put hotels into, into the residential areas, there was a, 300 people rode in and it was taken out. So does that mean if we write 300 in, as far as both of these petitions, that you will listen to us? Because we sort of feel like we were not at, we're only at the beginning of this, and that we plan on having at least that many people. So we're hoping that you understand that this will move forward and that it just, this is just not, you know, the end of it.
And you're referring to the petitions regarding the winery and the letters.
Yeah, well, just both of the petitions that we've put in, yeah, that we didn't, we didn't feel like we could have had any time to get any more than that, because it's only been a few weeks, and that since, and there was, it wasn't even announced that you were releasing the general plan, it was just thrown out on the internet, and it was not put in the paper, it was never, so people weren't even, even aware that it was out there.
Actually, I, I'd like to respond to that. I announced at every planning commission meeting up to, potentially upcoming general plan adoption, I discussed it personally with you.
To me, but for the general public, it was not publicized.
I understand, but let me finish my point.
It wasn't.
And I, as we were leading up to the publication of the general plan, I announced, I believe, for probably three meetings ahead of time, so that's six weeks, and I've, as I've mentioned tonight, this process with the planning commission will not even wrap up till the end of summer.
Right.
And will not be going before the city council until end of summer, early fall.
Okay, so we have time.
And I would just add, with regards to the hotels issue, that was a concept that was essentially proposed to staff as a conceptual idea. Staff took it to the city council, asked them if they were interested in it being incorporated in the general plan. City council unanimously said yes. Staff began working on the implementation of incorporating that in the general plan in response, because we also were being very public that we were doing that.
And that, that's good.
In response, there was members of the public who voiced their concerns over that. The decision-makers, the city council, heard those concerns and directed staff to remove it. There is no quantifiable level saying, if X number of comments are generated, will that result in policy A, B, or C changing? That, that is a question for a body of decision-makers, who is the city council, and there, there's not a quantifiable way to determine that.
But I guess what, I didn't, I didn't make myself quite clear. The citizens have, still have a voice that, so if they, the more people that stand up and, and agree to what you're saying or not saying and come forward, the more that they, the city has to listen to them. Because I, I just feel that it's been pre-decided that we want to pass this. And that, that even if we keep coming forward and keep coming forward in the next month or so, that I just feel that there's this big push to just pass it.
I, I actually respectfully disagree considering that we just went through your letter item by item and gave staff suggestions on how we're going to utilize parts of your letter into the general plan or at least recommend it to the city council. And that we aren't dealing with your winery because you gave it to us this meeting.
No, 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 I don't expect it. Just in a general-
We'd like to digest that and discuss it the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't know. It's just a general feeling that we're getting.
I would also say that there have been so many public hearings. I think to say by any stretch's imagination that the public wasn't aware this was going on, I don't know how to make him any more aware. I mean, people need to read the paper, they need to talk to their neighbors.
It is so frustrating. I can tell you from my side of the fence, too. It's like people go, what? I don't know what, are they doing the general plan again? It's really, really difficult to, to reach out, so I, I understand. No, I-
You can't, if people don't want to pay attention, they don't want to pay attention. I think that Jesse's articles are beautiful.
Yes, Jesse's doing a great job. I agree. So, but I guess my basic question is, you're still going to listen to us, right? The more the people that come in and-
We're never not listening.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's just the basic thing that I'm wondering.
But I think if your question is, is there a magic number at which point something gets stricken from the general plan? I don't think that-
No.
I think that's an unrealistic question. Because if 500 people say an idea that the folks who have spent a lot of time saying the facts disagree with, I think you have, it's, it is not a vote, we're not voting line by line. We're taking the body of information that we've been tasked with and appointed to and that your council has been elected to do. And I think that's the time the count, the votes count, the numbers count, is when you elect your council. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would just, I would just like to add, this is a, this is a guiding document for how decisions are going to be made moving into the future. The existing general plan established in 1993 anticipated a new adoption of a general plan before 2016. So we're essentially a rudderless ship, as we are today with the city of Santa Elena. The longer you put off making a decision on adopting a general plan, the longer we're moving forward without having zoning policies that implement the new current direction in 2016 of how we want the city to develop into the future. If, if we keep saying we need to change this, we need to change this, and we don't actually make a decision on where we are today to allow policy to be directing growth, infrastructure improvements.
I think to quote Victor from the, our meeting two meetings ago, this is never going to be a perfect document, and that's why we're going to revisit it on a quarterly basis.
And I think we say, can say with commitment that what this body, as well as council, has not done effectively is review this document.
And that's changing.
Twice a year, which is what we're supposed to be doing. But we've spent the last decade trying to rehash a 30-year-old document as opposed to working on a document, understanding it'll never be perfect, and then having an intelligent, predictable approach to discuss it as a community and make revisions over time that we find no longer work as it's a living document.
But I must say, though, over the last decade, that we have been working on, you know, we have been creating a document. And, you know, as if we were reviewing-
Correct, but we're still living on 1993. The more, discussion doesn't create a new document. We still are living under, our, our guiding document was built in 1993.
I understand that, but I, I think we've been, I think we've been working, the city's been working diligently on making the new general plan, you know, making the-
But we can't enforce anything in it because it's not, it hasn't been approved.
Well, I understand that, but I wouldn't say that for the last 10 years, we haven't been doing anything to, to make this a good document.
But none of it has real grip. That's what I think Commissioner Sweeney is getting at. Anyways, I see Mr. Ellsworth would like to add some-
Jeff Ellsworth, Sylvaner. I'm just thinking of this whole process where the citizens make a comment and then the planning commission takes over and then moves forward. And I'm just wondering if, if there's a way to look at it that the planning commission makes the, or makes their case and then the citizens can comment afterwards. Because sometimes the planning commission brings something up that's relevant, and then at that point, we have no ability to respond. So I'm glad the, the wine train came up. You know, I think that one of the reasons we don't see the stickers is because it hasn't been an issue for a long time. And now that all of the sudden, suddenly new stops are proposed in town, we don't know what the impacts of those are. And I don't know if the EIR is addressing those. Because that's a, you know, when you look down on Main Street where that train is going to stop, you know, it's going to have some impact. So I think that needs to be addressed. So I'm talking about circulation right now. But I, in terms of process, I think it'd be nice to be able to comment afterwards so that we're truly in a discussion as we are truly a community here. So I think the other thing that circulation needs to include is the connection to the county. You know, we're not living in a bubble here. And the county is making a lot of decisions that are approving a lot of businesses in the ag areas. And it's creating a lot of traffic. It's creating a kind of traffic that's based on a, a business model based on a lot of, large-scale alcohol consumption. It's a, this event center winery model, which uses a direct-to-consumer and onsite sales of wine by the glass or bottle. So we're seeing an increase in what's called binge tourism around the county, impacts and deaths related to that. And while the county is approving things outside of our city limit, we, we are sort of on an island here. And we have to use the county roads to get where we need to go. And so, so we need to be in a discussion with the county and the other cities. That discussion should have started about five years ago, 10 years ago, but it hasn't started yet. And so, starting, we have the footing still in Santa Elena to demand a discussion with the county. And it is time that we do so before more people die on our roads in accidents that shouldn't be happening. The time is now. The time is yesterday. So our circulation, when we look at our, just like our bodies, you know, it's like my spleen has a circulation system that connects to my heart, and I can't separate them. The circulation connects them. So our county and our city are connected by our circulation system. We need to have a very serious discussion about growth in Calistoga, growth in Yountville, growth in the county. And we need to have the discussion with them. And if we don't do that, we're allowing our chance to participate in the larger discussion that, that is critical to the, maintaining the balance of our, of our town. So as far as circulation goes, we need to work on what we're doing with our plan, but it needs to extend out and connect to the county. And we have the power to have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on circulation? I would also like to just comment that even though we are doing this as the public speaking first and then the commission has a discussion, if unfortunately, you have to come back to the next meeting, but you can absolutely bring up topics. Again, it's just, this is to be as efficient as possible. This isn't to stifle conversation. It's, there'll be numerous chances, and we do open it up for past topics discussed. Just wanted to make that note, Commissioner Koberstein.
I agree. I don't, I don't think we're trying to stifle presentation of ideas. There are new concerns that are popping up. I think what we're trying to do is stay on schedule to get to this in August. And that's our, these things are going to be said, and they're going to be brought out at the meetings, and it's going to be up to the council ultimately to decide how much tinkering they want to make. But I don't think we're foreclosing the opportunity for anybody to raise anything.
Do you want to recommend any kind of language that includes beginning a dialogue? That would include all the cities and the county, when, when just, you know, when dealing with circulation and, and other topics? Do you think that that's appropriate?
I think we sort of do that in general in the, at the beginning of the general plan when we talk about where Santa Elena's situated, how we interact with the county at large, and really kind of setting the stage of who we are as a community. So I think to specify that it, as it relates to circulation, that we need to outreach, I think that's kind of de facto is said several times throughout the plan.
And I would just add, it actually does occur significantly amount, especially with circulation. I mean, our Public Works Director goes to all the Napa Valley Transportation Authority meetings.
There's LAFCO, there's all of those other committees where the, a group discussion for all of the cities.
And you think that that's, that those are adequate?
Oh, absolutely. Our, our city council members all sit on various county boards. It's, it's part of their just job description. I mean, they're, each new seating of council, they spend 20 minutes in the first meeting assigning who's going to which county.
So you think the county is working together in an adequate way?
And I think, you know, again, I can't, I would be remiss to say I could cite every time it's mentioned in the general plan, but I know there are several comments throughout that speak to how we, you know, the, the overall ecosystem of, that is Napa County. So I think that we're kind of covered there.
It's, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying.
But maybe they're, you know, at least we, maybe we're toward it if we're not going to put anything in the general plan, but it, it, it still seems piecemeal and it's not all, you know, it's not as unified and coherent as it could be, I think, as, as these issues, the traffic issues especially, get more and more acute. Because they, they are getting more and more acute, and there's more and more stuff being built, so, you know, here and there. So, you know, I, I would like to see a more focused dialogue.
I would think it would be meaningful at some future date to actually maybe show the citizens what, all the various activities. I mean, we are with Caltrans, I mean, all the way to Caltrans. There are meetings and updates that we are getting constantly as citizens. So I think, again, citizens have to take the time to pay attention to that stuff. But there are, we have representation all the way to the state level when it comes to transportation.
And I would just add to that, we're, we're very one small fish in that big conversation.
Exactly.
So essentially, we're not always listened to, which means we may not always, you may not always see the results, or citizens may not always see the results they want because it's a bigger picture, such as Caltrans, the county. And there is numerous references, so Napa County Transportation Agency Strategic Plan, Strategic Transportation Plan is one of the founding elements to the circulation plan, an element of the general plan.
I know. I just read in the paper a lot about the, about the, you know, the different agencies around the Bay Area as far as transportation, and they're all, you know, they're all doing their own thing. And there's not an overall, there's not an oversight umbrella kind of focus. And they, they talk about doing that, and, and they have done it to some extent. And it, it seems to improve things, even though, you know, there, certain people are getting in touch certain times. You know, I don't know that everyone's talking in terms of, this is our county. You know, how are we going to work together to, as different cities and different counties? That's, you know, I'm not sure that that's what's going on. I mean, hearing what you're saying, that there's a lot going on.
But it's in the plan already. That, I mean, it, it sort of sets the stage broadly that we are part of a larger plan.
And I would just add, the entire county and all the jurisdictions participated in a meeting recently with Napa Valley Transportation Authority, talking to MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, about all of these issues. And, and that was the exact point that they, the MTC made to us is, you are a small rural county in a large urban area.
Right. Okay, so you think it's adequate, what, what's happening? And you guys do?
It's different if it's, I mean, in practice, you can have a different opinion of how adequate it is or not. But it's already addressed in the plan. I think it's really back to tonight's issues that we, we do speak that we're part of a larger constituency.
All right, all right. Jeff, I guess I will open up the public hearing for you, Mr. Ellsworth.
Jeff Ellsworth. Whatever the plan is, is not working. And, you know, whatever happened in Flint, Michigan, where everybody said, oh, I think they're covering it over there, and the people over there said, oh, they're covering it over there. Whatever the plan is on our county level and regional level is not working. We have a metastasizing traffic problem that's, is integrated with a, a alcohol consumption, large-scale alcohol consumption integrating with that traffic issue. And it's not being addressed properly on the county or regional level. And we're feeling the impacts in this town. So we can pass the buck and say, oh, you know, it's, we've got a system in place and, and there's a system, but the system's not working, and we need to address it. And we have the strength in this town and the footing to say, look, we're feeling the impacts. You're making decisions that are impacting us. And you're, you're making decisions without analyzing the impacts to the citizens, the residents who live here. So we can say there's a system in place. It's not working. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing again, and, well, briefly, and move on to chapter six, Historic Resources. Mr. Cornelio?
Yes, just briefly, this is historic resources element. Primarily what you have in terms of the change between the 93 and the April 2016 plan is simply new information, updated data, et cetera. From a policy point of view, there really is not a lot of substantial differences.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for staff? Going to open up the public comment? Going to close the public comment? Invite Commissioner Discussion? Does anyone feel like any changes? I feel like this is the easiest of all the chapters, like, this is fine. This is perfect. All right. None? Speak now forever, hold your peace. All right, perfect. I am going to move on to chapter seven.
Yes, Community Design. This chapter is significantly enhanced over what's in the 93 plan. And it, one kind of key component of it is, is the requirement for design guidelines that comes up in here, and that's something new to this plan as compared to the, the earlier plan. So, and, and there's simply just more guidance and direction here than in the 93 plan.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, do you think that, that what's in here adequately addresses the, the new urgency around having city standard, city design standards because of what's going to take place on June 9th with respect to H U N D? Do you think that the, that, that the general plan has enough set about that in it? Or, you know, I, and there's enough specific direction, or, I don't know, yeah, direction as to getting that done in, in a timely way and so forth?
I, I believe so. I mean, what it does is it, for essentially all the different categories of uses, it provides some, some design guidance and then has direction to prepare design guidelines. So I think it, it sets the stage for the city to prepare as much or as little detail as it wants in terms of providing design direction, whether it's in terms of housing or in relation to commercial and industrial uses. But it, it's a good question.
There's no timeline or there's no suggestion in there, in implementing? I, I'm sorry.
The, the implementation, and the, the first one up really is the, and is triggered by the whole housing element process, is design guidelines for the residential. If, you know, if the commission likes, some language could be put in there that prioritizes or put some additional oomph, I guess, in terms of, of the timing of getting those done or maybe even the priority. But right now, simply based on, on the city's housing element and the requirements in there, that the residential design guidelines would be the ones that are first up, and those are definitely the most critical, I think.
I would like to see some, some urgency language there, simply because we're going to be, we'll be rudderless in a way, to use your language, Noah, in terms, you know, after, after there are no use permits, at least for multifamily development in certain areas. We're only going to have the design guidelines that we have in our findings and, you know, in our, in our data. And I, and the city was, you know, I think the city should have the standards, and people are calling for it. And I, I would, I don't know if you guys agree, but I would like to see, you know, some, some urgency in there. Some wording, if you, if, I don't know if the rest of the-
I thought the housing element actually did prioritize. And you start with the multifamily, you know, it's going to take a while to do these design guidelines. But there's, there is, I believe, a priority already established about getting them out, getting them adopted. I think we're actually behind-
Yeah, we are.
-schedule here because we've already identified sites. We're not, sort of not going in the order that was anticipated. But I think the most important is to start with the guidelines that will, will affect some of these more dense projects.
I see. The housing element was a little confusing to me because they first said the design guidelines need to be in before the, the general plan is, is accepted. And then it said, no, the general plan can be accepted, and then the guideline. So I'm, I'm a little confused, and I'd really, it may be, maybe the general plan is not the appropriate place, but if it's in the, if it's in the housing element, but I'm, I'm asking you. And I'm, if you think it is an appropriate place to put that urgency, I don't like the idea of not having certain sequel standards for multi-unit developing, developments after June 9th.
I, I think, and, and just adding on what Commissioner Koberstein indicated, there is specific language in the housing element that really does put a priority on it happening right now. Technically, we're behind schedule, so we need to, that is the priority.
And I would just add, that design guideline- And I would just add, that design guideline process will in no way affect SEQA, in no way.
No, I'm just saying that it will provide more, presumably more guidance than not having the use permit anymore, because the only, there's no guy, there's no, you know, oversight, you know, standardized guidance from the city, and that's, you know, that's why I thought the housing element initially said that that should be done before the, before the general plan.
But I thought we discussed this, that it, it doesn't, there won't be a lack of guidance, and there won't be, we're not going to be rushing, because I think you had brought.
It's a permitted use. There's still design review, so to speak.
Because I thought you had issues around safety, and we said we're not going to do shoddy building. I mean, and all of those traditional parameters from place, right?
Yeah, I think what, I think what Commissioner Monet's getting to is, is establishing some design criteria that would, that would ensure that these multifamily developments that are now going to be allowed by right will fit well into the sites that they're being proposed at. And I, it is a priority for staff, however, you know, we have to take the resources we have, and there were no resources dedicated to either, to implementing either of those directives beyond what we already have. I mean, essentially, I don't want to get into details of funding, but there are no resources dedicated to it. However, it is a priority to staff, and staff understands the importance. And just to get into a little bit, some of the direction that came out of that housing element anticipated that design review and use permits would go away for multifamily housing. I was very emphatic that we will not eliminate discretionary design review for multifamily housing against the city attorney's direction.
Well, I want to go on record of thanking you for that.
Thank you, Noah. All right. I'm going to open up the public hearing on Chapter Seven with Community Design. Going to close it, continue Commissioner Discussion. I am going to ask, are you here for any of the chapters, or are you just here to, we can? Oh, right, perfect. Okay, because I was going to pop it forward if you were here for a certain chapter. Okay, perfect. Commissioner Discussion on Community Design. I think that we kind of addressed multifamily housing with the housing element. That's definitely the directive there.
I think it's very thorough and should be very meaningful to our citizens if they read it.
Perfect. All right, moving on to Chapter Eight, Open Space and Conservation. Mr. Cornelia?
Yes, just in summary, the main observation really is that the new general plan is, has a much more extensive element in terms of open space and conservation than the nineteen ninety-three plan. Much more policy direction, more policies as it relates to protections, et cetera, than the ninety-three plan. That's, that's really the, the primary takeaway, I guess.
Any questions for staff? All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Going to close the public hearing. Commissioner Discussion?
Again, I would just say that I think that this plan, a lot of thought went into it, and that this was in a direct response to a lot of public input, that we wanted more public space, we wanted more open space, that it should be managed and become a very active element.
I think it's a credit to our city how important we, we find open space.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask, what's the, when are, when are developers required to put in land for parks? And, I mean, are small developers, do they have to provide any, is it in lieu payments for?
Every single family, every unit constructed, whether it's homes or, or commercial, provides a per-square-foot fee towards parks.
Okay, but there is no land required or anything?
It's a, it's a, it's a fee that's used, yeah, that's right.
Any other discussion? All right, moving on, Chapter Nine, Public Health, Safety, and Noise. Mr. Cornelia?
Uh, well, once again, this section primarily, it's, updates the previous element as compared to, or similar with the other elements, it's more extensive. Rather than, one of the most significant changes clearly has to do with the flood control improvements that have been constructed, and, and those are discussed and addressed in this section of the plan.
We've definitely heard a bit about flood control. Any questions for staff? Public hearing. All right, going to open and close. Commissioner Discussion?
Well, is there any room for the information that we have been given lately, in the last meeting and this meeting regarding at least the flood plan and the, the remarks of Ms. Bradshaw that, that are applicable at all for any of this? I mean, we just kind of, you know, I don't know if there's any, any reason for.
What is, weren't her discussion points more in regard to zoning?
Yeah, hers were more land use and zoning than.
She wanted to see this area zoned, zoned ag.
Of, of the flood plan and so forth, but okay, if you, you know, I'm just asking if you think there's any application.
Staff can take a look at the written material that was submitted and report back and see if there, it does create a feedback loop.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Any other commission comments, discussion? All right, we are killing it. Chapter Ten, Climate Change?
Yeah, and short and sweet, this, this is a brand-new element, and obviously, it's something kind of new under the sun and not in the ninety-three plan, so all the language here is new. And required by steel.
I think it underscores how long it's been since we've done a general plan. I only think climate change was a vocabulary word in nineteen ninety-three. Should have been, but was not.
Well, is there any work on making it a little less hot? I would like to, I would like to see that.
All right, any questions for staff other than, all right, public hearing, open? Closed. Commissioner Discussion? I think this is such a scientific, it's kind of, thanks. All right, and let me switch over. Chapter Eleven, The Housing Element.
Yeah, there really is nothing, yeah, to add here. Housing element is, obviously, is an element of the general plan, and, and just given the way the process works for the state, this is updated on a, typically every forty-eight years, so the city updated its housing element in May of last year, and that's the current element we're operating under.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we need for the record, for folks viewing this, that the reason they don't have a copy of the housing element, because you did speak to that in a previous meeting, is that was not included in this draft, because it's already been approved?
It's already been approved by the state, yeah.
But just so that it's on the record of the meeting.
Thank you for stating that. It is available on the website for review as well.
Perfect.
Well, we could always talk about it.
But for folks who are looking at the handouts, they don't, it doesn't exist in this document, because it was already approved. Just want that on the record.
All right, perfect. And then Chapter Twelve, Parks and Recreation.
Right, once again, mostly updating, probably from a policy standpoint, the, the biggest single change is it, the new general plan identifies, even though the state law limit is five acres of park per thousand population, the, the park element identifies a target goal that's substantially higher of ten and a half acres per thousand population, and that was something that came out of the, the whole general plan formation process, so. That's probably, from a policy point of view, the biggest single difference.
Any questions for staff? Going to open the public hearing? Going to close the public hearing? Commissioner Discussion? Again, I think it just goes to, we like our open space. Moving on, Chapter Thirteen, Arts, Culture, and Entertainment.
Yeah, just real brief, this is a new element. It doesn't really have a comparable analog in the ninety-three plan, and has a number of goals and policies that address relevant issues.
Any questions for staff?
I think for the public discussion, though, that there has been a lot of commentary over the last certainly two years, especially as it relates to the Chamber of Commerce and other entities within the community, that the community wanted to see this element, so I hope that it remains intact.
I'm going to open up the public hearing? Going to close the public hearing? I just still appreciate your no's, like, I really do. All right, Commissioner Discussion? I, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Sweeney. It's very nice that we, you know, there's, there's been so much more of a focus on arts and culture and entertainment, and it adds such a nice atmosphere in our town. It's very important. Any other comments? All right. That's it for tonight. I'm sure we'll have more comments at the next meeting on items we'll review.
Which items are, what do you mean?
Uh, exactly. You're funny, Commissioner Monet. All right, moving on to department reports, and, oh, by the way, thank you, Victor Cornelia, very much appreciated.
Thank you. This is great, very efficient.
All right, department report.
I don't have a lot to talk about. I was going to identify the general plan EIR timeframe, which I already did, just a reminder that May twenty-third, the general plan EIR will be posted for the forty-five-day public review and comment period, and that's anticipated to end on July seventh, after which the response to comments will be put together and brought back for the commission review and action. And I will say, Senior Planner Aaron Heacock has a brand-new baby girl at home.
Congratulations.
He is out of the office for approximately three weeks, and so I am trying to hold down the fort without him, and his absence is undoubtedly impacting some of our department timelines slightly, however, we're continuing to move forward as best we can.
Perfect, thank you for that.
And I suppose we're not going to be meeting on the thirty-first?
No, that would be the, it's meeting.
We don't have meetings on the fifth weeks, yeah.
Yeah. Moving on to Agenda Forecasts. You kind of went through it, but.
Sure, yeah, so I've identified some of the projects that are in the process, and this kind of gets back to some of the comments made about, you know, how is the public going to know about what was under review, and, and this is something that, that staff has put together within the last six months, I think maybe even a year, of trying to provide more transparency to what's in the review process, what's going to be coming forward. So I would encourage both commissioners who have questions about what we're working on to review that, as well as members of the public. It talks about projects that are in process, direction that's been provided from the commission to staff, as well as the council to staff, that things are working on. And it, it's relatively informative, at least as a conversation started to, huh, what is that? You know, this is something, a parcel I might be concerned about, or a neighborhood I might be concerned about, and they can come in and talk to us and see what's going on, so that's the intent of that.
And just for clarity, this is included in the packet, so it's online every two weeks when you send out the commission agenda.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney, for pointing that out. And I believe with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.